This is the December 8, 2014, meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, point of personal privilege.
State your point, Councilor Rego.
I just got some information that is pretty exciting for the city of Revere. The Junior Patriots D Squad Elite Cheerleading Squad won its national championship. So hopefully, I know there are a whole group of folks who are going to be down there, but we have at least one national champion who is going to be coming back.
That's terrific.
Very exciting.
Fantastic lead.
Mr. President.
Councilor Penta.
We just have a moment of silence for Scipio DeRamo. He was one of Revere's finest, been around the city. If anybody walked in Revere Coffee Shop, he was in there daily, and he passed away suddenly. Yeah, just take a moment of silence for him. Appreciate it.
Here.
Here, Councilor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Calendar item number one, hearing called as ordered on the petition of National Grid to install conduit locations from pole number 374 to the property located at 600 Ocean Avenue.
Name an address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Michael Cordima, work for National Grid Electric at 170 Metford Street in Walden, and the company is petitioning for conduits to serve their new Vanguard Apartments that are being built on Ocean Ave. Thank you.
Okay, any other proponents? People in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? People opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any city councilors? Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is in my ward, and it's on Ocean Ave, opposite the TOD Development, right behind the state police barracks, and I would hope we can move on this tonight to make this happen. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Roll call.
Shall the city council approve the petition of National Grid to install conduit locations from pole number 374 Ocean Avenue to the property located at 600 Ocean Avenue? Councilor Rego.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been approved.
Thank you. My apologies. Thank you.
Calendar item number two, report of the zoning subcommittee.
Okay, since I was the acting chairman of the zoning subcommittee, I'll give my own report. Committee met on three issues tonight. Want to give me the numbers? The first item was C-14-11, New Singular Wireless PCS. That was voted out favorably and will be looking for unanimously, and we'll be looking for a vote on the special permit on that one. The other was Regina Oliveira, 107 Pearl Avenue, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify a non-conforming structure. That was also unanimously voted out favorably. We'll be looking for a vote tonight on that. And the other, the third one, was C-14-15, which is the proposal of Clear Channel for a digital billboard. We had a lot of great discussion, a lot of good information, and it looks like it's going to be voted out favorably, but not, we won't take a vote on it tonight for, with the city council, but the committee, the committee is favorable to the proposal, and we're holding the vote for the next city council meeting, which is the 15th, when Chairman Riordan is back, so he can be here when we vote on it. So if, the clerk will take up the two proposals, and we'll leave Clear Channel on the table till next week.
On application C-14-11, shall the city council grant the relief requested by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC to modify an existing telecommunications facility at 134 Railroad Street? Counselor, I'm sorry, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review. Councilor Rego.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Good luck.
And on application C-14-16, by Regina Oliveira, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify a non-conforming structure by converting a three-unit dwelling into a four-unit dwelling, shall the city council grant the relief requested? Councilor Rego.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
No.
No, Councilor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Suspension rules on that? All in favor, opposed?
Suspension rules in hopes it does not prevail.
On the vote, does not prevail. Back to the regular other business.
Calendar item number three, report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Chairman Penta.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, due to time refrains, we only took one item up.
My apologies.
No problem. It was ETP fund, the educational grant money and stuff that they get, so, and it was voted unanimously, so I'd appreciate if you'd take a vote up in favor. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $199,676.96 from the ETP Committee to the Revere Public Library in the amount of $8,000, to Revere Public Safety in the amount of $84,000, to the DPW in the amount of $5,176.96, to the RHS Scholarship Fund in the amount of $8,000, and to the City of Revere Computer Technology Account in the amount of $94,500? Councilor Rego.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the ETP fund transfers have been approved. Calendar item number four, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Lori Giardella as the city auditor. Communication from Donna Nugent relative to a summer work program.
Placed on file? What's that? Ways and Means?
She's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were here. Come to the podium.
Who are you?
Name an address for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
Address for the record.
Donna Nugent, Conan Street. Would you like me to read? I don't know if you people have what I proposed in front of you. What should I do?
We do have it.
I'll read it out loud?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm proposing a summer work program to assist the elderly of Revere with garden work, yard work, moving, mowing, hedge cutting, et cetera. The logistics are simple and easy, and most of it I have already worked out and presented to the Housing for the Elderly, I'm sorry, not the Housing for the Elderly, to Steve Fielding, as well as to the Recreation Department. Those were received with positive, a positive reception. Basically, this summer, I struggled to find somebody that would come to my mother's home at a decent price. Not somebody from the newspaper, not a huge landscaping corporation, just a simple, maybe elderly, maybe retiree, maybe student, that would like to make a little extra money over the summertime. But there's nothing in place. Having been a schoolteacher and having done so many programs, this would be a self-sufficient program, where by May, we have a list of individuals from the community that have their name. They can be easily quarried and sored, as you all know what that means. That is not an issue. But what really is needed is one basic, stable place for this to be available to the public. And I would like it to be where Steve is, because I think it's the most appropriate place. This would allow people to have a work program. It would put people to work that want a little extra money. Their names would be available, what they can do would be available, their ability to set their own price would be available, as well as a set schedule. I don't mind taking that on. Preparing a set schedule, where Monday and Tuesday, Joe is going to be available from 4:00 to 8:00. And there's a phone number, so that if a person who cannot constantly remember when and who's available, sometimes they just show up at the door, and it's scary to them. And I have witnessed firsthand experience at this. So to have somebody available all the time, that could be something that would, I believe, be helpful, as opposed to, obviously, letting yards go or gardens go, where a lot of people love to maintain their gardens, especially in Revere, and they never really could continue. I had a garden myself, and I, so I know how much work it takes, okay? Some people still want to have their garden, can't do it. So as mundane as this might be, it's something that I believe is very necessary, and I would like to take it on. I'm not asking for any money. And eventually, after the month of May, I believe it could be self-sufficient. It is not something that needs somebody to work or to look over. I also don't mind presenting this to a committee or working with a committee. I love to work by a team. So even though I've got all the papers worked out and all the logistics worked out, I don't know the city of Revere that well anymore. So I don't mind, obviously, having to put this on a team.
Well, I appreciate your efforts, and I would send this to a committee, but the committees are going to change, as someone said earlier, you know, they're going to change in a couple of weeks. So there's no point, you won't get a hearing. I think what we're going to do is put this off until the election of president and the new committees are selected. And then we'll put this in the appropriate committee, and you can work with them. There are a lot of issues I think we need to talk about, like insurance and liability and all that other good stuff, that those of us who play lawyers on TV, we have to think about and worry about, the city's indemnification and so forth. So there are some things to be talked about.
I agree. And if you don't mind me interrupting.
Not at all.
I'm a person that has done many things that initially got said, "God told, this is a negative situation here," or "this might not work." And this, I don't hear, no, I know you're not saying that. I know you're being very positive, and I appreciate that. I just believe that this is definitely something that, I've done so many field trips and so many, paid attention to insurance issues and that kind of thing. So I do understand, safety, safety is totally an issue for the community, but I don't think it's something that has to be a block. I think it's something we can work out. There's no doubt in my mind.
Councilor Novoselsky.
Can we just put this on the table? You know, instead of, so we can bring it up after the first of the year?
Yeah, we're just going to table this tonight, and we will bring it up, and we will put it in an appropriate committee. You can work with that committee, and, because it sounds like a terrific idea.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this will remain on the table.
Calendar item number six, motion presented by Councilor Powers, that the mayor convene a meeting with Revere Beautification Committee, Councilor Powers, and Councilor Novoselsky relative to Butler Circle. This meeting should be held in January to discuss the beautification of Butler Circle.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, for several years now, Butler Circle, we've done work down there. Suffolk Construction came in, and they, they put the concrete perimeter around it. Earlier on, I had a lot of the trees and shrubs pulled out of there that were blocking the view for motorists going around the circle. The irrigation needs fine tuning, but the water is in the circle, and that's something that wasn't there several years ago. Now, Councilor Novoselsky and myself brought a motion before the city council that the Wonderland pay a fee for parking the trucks and cars down there at the circle. And I believe that amount, if I remember right, was, came to, I think, $18,000 a year, $18,500, something like that. Well, that happened last year and this year, so that would tell me that, right now, there's $36,000 plus hanging around in some account, hopefully. And what I'd like to do is have a meeting, just as the motion says, early in January. There's probably, we're doing work up at Bell Circle, too, through Comfort Inn, but in the Beautification Committee. But I think there's probably less work that has to be done at Butler Circle to get it in shape than at the Bell Circle. So I can't see any reason why both of these circles can't be completed this year. Irrigation, some plantings in there, maintain properly, I think it'd be a great, a great improvement for, it would send a message to people driving through our city that, you know, we're on top of things here. We're trying to make our city look a little better, and it is a little better. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Councilor Haas.
Just bring me up to date. Wasn't money already allocated to Butler Circle in the past? There was, there was some fill brought in there, some loam. It was cleaned out. I believe that the fellow down in Oak Island has the nursery down there. He did some work there, Mr. Collicia. But it was never completed, and that's what I'd like to see happen. I'd like to see Butler Circle look almost as nice as the circle on Broadway, Brown Circle, and that strip up there, because this is the east side of the city. I'd like to see it look as nice as the west side of the city. I think the residents down there deserve it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers.
But that's by capital waste, as we know, who's making the major contribution, correct?
That's right. Capital waste.
Capital waste, right.
And the one that sponsors that beautiful circle.
And Wonderland is making the contributions through the parking for Butler Circle. Thank you, Mr. President.
Perfect. Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to add on a little for Councilor Powers, Green Acres did do some work down there, and they, at that particular time, they did the best they can, but then they built the garage. And the T used the circle as a staging area for all their equipment, and totally destroyed all the piping, all the heads. Everything was, I mean, really destroyed. And all they did was, when they replaced it, was just put dirt, or loam, or that they want to call it, over everything. So the sprinkler system there is shut. We just have the feed in there at the, at the north end of the circle, and we tried to get the T to, and the contractor to, to repair it, and they said there's no money in the, in the state fund anymore for, to make any more repairs. So that's last year, when we talked about the $18,000 for the fee for parking at Wonderland, that that money was going to be, you know, put forth towards the beautification of Butler Circle. So like Councilor Powers said, we're two years into this now, so there is approximately $36,000. But we did contact DPW, and they were supposed to contact an architect. We put up $1,500 for an architect to come up with a design to do the circle over, and I just don't know where that is right now. But I think this meeting will bring a lot of things to the head. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Novoselsky. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number seven, motion presented by councilors Penta and Patch, that the mayor submit a home rule petition to the state legislature for the purpose of establishing a police reserve list in the city of Revere, similar to that of the fire department.
Councilor Penta or Councilor Patch, who wants it?
All right, I'll go first. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, what we're asking is, the fire department right now has a reserve list. It's up to the chiefs how many it puts on. I think this, I'm not sure if this is 30, whatever it is. The Revere Police Department used to have one. For whatever reason, they don't have one, but who's may, I mean, I just think that someone takes a test, the mark's high, they have ambitions of being a Revere resident, as a Revere police officer, you know, the state nickel and dimes you with these fees to take another test. And I think, you know, it's about time that the police department has reserve lists, to put Revere residents on there, that they're their first priorities at these jobs as a Revere police officer. I think it's a no-brainer. I think the state will go along with it. I don't know anybody that's opposed to it, anybody I've talked to is opposed to it. Everybody thinks it's a great idea. I talked to the fire chief several times about this, and he was surprised that, you know, they never opted to have one, and it works for him. And the other thing is, if a police officer, if I know I'm on there, and it might take a year or so to get on, I may go to the academy myself and pay out on myself, makes the other cities some money, you don't know. I'll get, go to school for law enforcement or something, knowing that you're going to, you're on that list, and you have the right, if they come to your name, eventually you will have a choice to be a police officer. So you can gear, you know, your education around it, a lot of things. It just, just makes a lot of sense to me. And Charlie actually came to me, and, you know, we discussed this many times, him being a police officer for 30-something years, that's how Charlie got on the thing you're talking about. I don't want to take his, his speech away, but talking to Charlie about it, who I respect as a police officer, retired police officer, oh, highly, I didn't hesitate to put Ben Hamon in as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Penta, Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been trying, actually, I've been trying to do this for quite a while. Everybody notices how successful the, the fire department of keeping Revere, Revere people, and giving them the opportunity to work as firemen. It's been going on, Chief Darty himself came off a reserve list in 1971. I mean, I came off a reserve list in 1975. It's, and everybody on that reserve list were Revere residents. For some reason, the police got away from it, and they got, and it's, it's really sad. I mean, they, these, these kids have to go in and take the police test every two years and pay $100 to get a state to take a test. And they get a high mark, and if, if a job comes up on the police department, now they have to, like, if it's one opening, they have to go to three, three names, but if there's ties, they have to bring the ties in. There's usually a lot of tie scores. So now you got the, an understaffed detective bureau who has to do background checks, and it just takes away, they don't have the, the force, enough on the force to do it, and it takes away from their police duties. I think it works. It works in Chelsea, it works in Wentworth. I don't understand if there's anybody that's working over there that's against it. They're not going to be able to work details, so I don't see any effect there. So again, if you notice, if you go into any fire station, you will see third generation of firefighters working there, and it's something that I would like to see happening to the police department. I know, you know, it's just a, an opportunity for the people, you know, for the people in Revere, and, and I don't understand why they got away from it, but that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Patch, Councilor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great motion, and I'm completely in favor of it. I think in terms of efficiency for the department and getting new folks on, on the force, this makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate that Councilors Patch and Penta would put this together. It's really, really makes a lot of sense. The only question that I do have is about the number. I know Councilor Penta alluded to the fact that the chief would set the number. Is that, is that, like, that's what happens in the fire department? I just, I don't want to see us get a list of, you know...
You want to answer that, Councilor Patch?
Yes, I actually asked that same question to Chief Darty, because I was curious about the number that they could go.
Yeah.
And it goes by population, so he figures around, it could go to 22.
Okay.
Because I think they just increased it two more because of the increase of the population.
The census.
They did another home rule, pushed through another home rule to get two more on the list.
And then would it be Revere, for Revere residents only?
Yes, that's how the list, the list comes down, Revere residents only.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rego, Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I, I like the idea, but for some reason, I, I remember last year speaking to someone about this, and I know there was some issues about veterans, disabled veterans, and people, and transfers coming in from other, other cities that have, on layoffs. So what I would like to see, and I don't mind, I don't mind voting on this, but I'd like to get some answers to see which way we're going, so I'd recommend that we put it in public safety and discuss it, and get the chiefs up and discuss it there. Thank you.
Absolutely. There's no way we're voting on this tonight. We're voting to, we're voting to explore it, but...
That's what I had intended.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do. Okay, thanks, Councilor Novoselsky, Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm 100% in favor of this. Several years ago, at the request of a couple of longtime firefighters, they asked me to put in a motion to reactivate the reserve list for the fire department, and I did. And since then, several members have been appointed to the fire department, and it is, it is a generational thing. Firefighters and police are a very proud group, one generation to the next, and I think that's important, because it gives, it gives them pride in Revere, to stay in this city and, and work here, and bring their family up here, and do all of the other important things that make a city a good city. So I intend to support this 100%, and I want to commend the Councilors Patch and Penta for putting this motion before us this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? Let's go into public safety, yeah.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Councilor Rego, that the mayor and chief of police discuss crime statistics and crime occurrences specifically related to the closing hour of bars being removed from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. at the next meeting of the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Councilor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, over the last couple of weeks, there have been a rash of incidents at several different bars, and I know when, when we roll back the hours of the bars last year, last summer... And I know when, when we rolled back the hours of the bars last year, last summer, there was a discussion about collecting data and collecting information on the number of calls and the number of incidents that happened at these establishments. And I think it's worth having the discussion to kind of have a check-in on where we are and what we're seeing in terms of crime. Because what we hear may be, of the recent rash of incidents, may be an anomaly. But it would be interesting, we now have over a year's worth of information to look at. And I think it's worth, worth having that discussion about, are we seeing any, any increases in crime or are we seeing any increases in incidents? And I believe there was, there was an agreement or there was a, there was a, a thought that we would be very strict in terms of establishments that are, that are having issues. So I just want to make sure that we all keep this on our radar and that we, we hear about some of the data that we've collected over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rego, Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have no problems with the motion. The only thing that I ask, and we have a license board that sure monitors this. The only thing I, and I've seen and heard of some issues, you know, and the council is asking between 1:00 and 2:00, because I know there's an incident at a place that happened like 10 o'clock at night. So I mean, would that, I mean, is it between 1:00 and 2:00 we're asking for?
I think what we want to know is just, is there, is there an increase in, in, you know, crime statistics or problems with establishments that have been rolled back from 1:00 to 2:00?
I have no problem with that. The only other thing I'd say is, I hope, and the license board I'm sure does do this, that you're doing the merits. In other words, if you got 15 bars and you get three bars that have 10 complaints, five complaints, and the other ones have zero, I hate to see them get penalized. That's what happened before. They took everybody in the city. And I don't think that, that's right. I mean, someone's running an establishment to hire the right people to do things right, and they get penalized for doing nothing wrong. I just hate to see that happen. And I, and I can understand the council's thing, a year's gone by and I have no problem with data and everything else going to help us. But I mean, my thing is, I noticed some incidents that happened like 9:00, 10:00 at night. Those incidents, you know, it's, I mean, probably dissect those. And I'm sure the chief or whatever information they get can divide that and separate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Penta, Counselor Hass.
Thank you, Mr. President. The night before Thanksgiving, there were two incidents within the city in the vicinity of 2:00 AM. So I think the motion makes sense. We want to get these people up there who say they're going to clean up their act, and they haven't cleaned up their act. And I think it's about time the city council gets involved and really shows its teeth. Granted, the license board is a special authority. We have no input, but we can make recommendations to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hass. Any other councils? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number nine, that the mayor requests Donald Goodwin, Nick Reistrum, Joe Maglione, and Frank Stringi to appear before the Public Works Subcommittee meeting on December 15th at 5:30 PM to discuss the operational failure of the tide gate at the B and M tracks.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. About a week ago on a Friday evening, I got a call about 4:30 in the morning. People calling me to tell me that they had water and perhaps even sewage going into their homes down in Oak Island. Arcadia Street, Elaton Street, Yarke, and Agyle. As a matter of fact, the water was coming out of the ditch all the way up to Yarke Street, which is a considerable distance. I called Donald Goodwin. And the problem was at that time that they couldn't get out and close the tide gate because the water was too high out of the B and M tracks, from what I understand. I was told that the reason the tide gate is left open is because the state regulators, federal regulators, want that open at certain times to allow the water to come in and kill the phlegmitis. Well, the mess I saw down there, you know, no one should have to put up with that in their homes. No one should have to put up with a foot of water in their basements or in their homes if they're on a first-floor level. You know, Mayor Hass, to his credit, when he was mayor, the end of his term, I believe spent, it was a million dollars, Mayor Hass, down there on the tide gate. Mayor Imbracino, to his credit, three or four years ago, spent $900,000 on four streets, Arcadia, Yarke, Elaton, and Agyle. Triple the capacity of the drainage down there, resurfaced all the streets, all new drain lines. And now we're getting water back down there again. I'm told also that there may be a malfunction with the tide gate. Well, I think it's important, we get, the winter months are coming now, that we get that fixed as quick as possible. No one in this city, unless there's a storm, excuse me, a major storm, should have to put out, put up with sewage, stormwater in their homes. I think we've gone beyond that. I had hoped we had. People down in Bay Road had the same thing. And you know, I want to mention that we were very fortunate that Frank Stringi was able to get some money two years ago and take out all that phlegmitis over on the western side of North Shore Road and back of Dark Hagens. Because if he hadn't, all that water also would have been in the Oak Island neighborhoods, over a million gallons. So I think the best way to handle this is to have Mr. Goodwin, the superintendent, have Nick Reistrum, the city engineer, have Frank Stringi, the city planner, and Joe Maglione, who's head of the Water and Sewer Department, all come up to the meeting and let's iron this out once and for all. Let's make sure that the people this winter don't have any more of these occurrences. It's not a nice thing to wake up in the morning with a foot of water in your home. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Janino.
Thank you. I think this is a great motion, Counselor Powers. I got several calls that day about residents having an issue in that area. And I think it's something that we definitely need to discuss because I know there are a lot of different issues. I got reports that, you know, there might be missing pieces to the actual structure that needs to be repaired. And residents were concerned about how this mechanism is monitored to make sure that, you know, kids aren't taking parts from it and that it can function properly and that there is some way to monitor it and make sure that it's running properly and there's an effective system to make sure that this doesn't happen again because it caused a significant amount of damage. And it was very sudden. It wasn't something that you could plan for. It wasn't a huge storm surge that you could anticipate. So I definitely know there are a lot of residents that are looking forward to talking at this meeting. And I hope that it is advertised, so that they know about it, so that they can come and speak. Because a lot of people are directly affected by this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. Counselor Hass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was quite involved with, with it in the early morning. Margot called me up to let me know what was going on. And, you know, you spend all this good money on the most modern equipment, but a malfunction. These state agencies, the city agencies, should check prior to heavy rain. We all know when it's going to rain, there's going to be two and a half inches tomorrow morning. They should be down there right now. And, you know, I was going to put this motion in, but John jumped me on it. One thing I want, they were down there today cleaning up the culvert, the state. And I was somewhat taken back by the machine went into the culvert, put it, put the debris right beside it. Well, as we all know, when it rains, that goes right back into the culvert. That's insane. They should have had a truck with them that when they extracted the material out of the culvert, you put in a truck and you remove it. But whenever by again tonight, it's all right beside it. It's no brains, you know? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Hass. Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, I also received a call at 6:30 in the morning, sadly morning, in reference to the same situation. And I appreciate and share my concern with the residents who had to go through the pains of this unbelievable event. I also represent the area of Martin Street, which I live on, and then Atwood, that's right across the highway there, at the same. We also share the same flood that comes in through those floodgates. So many of the homes there were also affected. So this is a major concern. And I think the unfortunate part of this, I think a lot of it alludes to the fact that people are in Boston making the decision for us in Revere. We have to have a vocal point in our community where we outreach to the, our counterparts in Boston and let them know, we live day to day, hour to hour, with these responsibilities. And if they don't have somebody in-house that they can direct this attention to, meaning they don't have to come from Boston, I'm not looking forward to that. But they should have a representative in the area who can go down during these types of emergency to prevent this from happening. I mean, this is, in my opinion, is a human error. And so coupled with some of the debris that was also there, as Mayor Hass, former Mayor Hass, as I spoke about, the state realizes the situation and they were down cleaning about. But again, I think it's human error that created this particular problem. And I think that should be averted. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Well, I spoke to the mayor about this and I've spoken to the superintendent of Public Works. And they are on top of these particular floodgates for tomorrow's storm. However, there was a malfunction. There is, there is a problem. I think if the council will allow me to amend his motion, I think we need to add CDM Smith to that motion for Bob Button and some engineers to come up here because they're also looking into the situation with the tide gates.
Mr. President, I welcome any expertise we can have down there.
So on the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor requests the DPW to clean up the damaged guardrail on Rice Avenue. In its present condition, it constitutes a public hazard, oh, sorry, a possible hazard to the residents in the area.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was an accident down there on Rice Avenue about a week or so ago. My concern is the guardrail. I know they probably can't fix it right now until the springtime. But I'd like to see the DPW go down there and pull that wood out of there because it's all splintered. And if some kid running along there catches his leg in it or something like that, then we've got another problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Patch that the mayor requests the DPW to install a guardrail at 652 Washington Avenue at the corner of Malden Street due to several motor vehicle accidents at this location.
Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. If my colleagues aren't familiar, this is the, used to be the old, several businesses, the store, little store there in the corner. It's now residential. And actually, the last accident there, the car ended up in the, they couldn't get out the front door. The front door is right in the sidewalk. So I know there's probably not, I don't know if there's money in the fund, but if they could put the guardrail, they'd really appreciate it for their own public safety. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor requests the fire department to remove the sneakers hanging from wires on Revere Street next to Douglas Street. This motion is being submitted after several requests from me to the fire chief.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, I rise with a very, very happy hat tonight to state that the fire chief has submitted that this be removed. But the thing that, why I pay particular attention to this is, this particular type of activity is a symbol of gang activity. And I want to show those gang members that our gang is bigger than theirs. And we want to make our city an aesthetically safe and beautiful city. We don't want to see these foolish sneakers hanging from wires that really absolutely brings our city all the way down to its knees. So especially on Revere Street where it's a major thoroughfare. But I don't want it on any, any street or any side street of our community. They should be removed immediately. And I, I look forward to the chief's assistance in this because he has the apparatus that can go forward and do this. We had an individual who volunteered years ago to do this. But I understand he wasn't being paid for it. So I didn't have any recourse to go and ask him to remove these sneakers any, any further. So I'm very happy to say that these sneakers have been removed. And I look forward to any other citizen calling to get these sneakers removed as soon as possible because it's not what Revere is all about.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. That's the falls in the broken window category. Mayor Giuliani cleaned up the city. Unfortunately, the city's going downhill now with the new liberal mayor in there. Listen, what can I tell you? Ask a cop over there if they like them. On the motion. Are you withdrawing that motion, sir? Okay, motion's withdrawn.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor, in the honor of the holiday season, requests the parking clerk to instruct the parking control officers to not issue violations for metered parking in the business districts.
Mr. President, this is solely.
Counselor Guanasso.
This is solely to encourage local residents and visitors to our community to shop local during the holiday season, to put a little boost in our economy. And I've been told subsequently from the city clerk that on the 15th of this month, we will be doing such a thing. But I think also, my opinion is, I think it should be the month of December because people do a lot of holiday shopping prior to the 15th of the month. And I think that the local merchants could use this little boost in our, in their economies to, to help them through the hardship of being in business. So this is a form to, a little effort to help our local business people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso, Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a great motion. The only thing I'd like to see is to and from, I mean, let the people know it's going to start the 15th. So whatever date it is, it should be a date to the 26th? Well, I mean, that, that should be, that should be advertised. But I think it's a great motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. No further bus, oh, Counselor Janino.
May I just have a point of personal privilege?
State.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank our current council president, President Zimbudo. You know, being the council president is no easy task. And I think that we've had a very productive year on the council. And I wanted to take this moment to address my colleagues and say that I hope that, you know, this council and its infinite wisdom will choose a president democratically this year rather than pulling a name out of a hat. Because it has been brought to my attention that they will decide one following the meeting this evening. And if you have questions about any of this, feel free to contact the current president or the next president. Thank you.
Thank you for the compliment. I guess, I've got some public service announcements that my colleague, Counselor Novosolsky, always looks out for me. And I, I want to thank him for helping me through this year with his, his little notes that he hands me all the time. I couldn't have got by without him. So here's our public service announcements. On December 11th, Costa Park Holiday Lighting, a holiday party. That's at 5:30 PM at Costa Park on Shirley Ave. 12:14, the city of Revere's City Hall Christmas tree lighting ceremony. That's at 5:00 PM. The 17th, 12:17, the Honecker lighting or the Manura lighting in front of City Hall. You try to trip me up by putting Honecker lighting. The Manura lighting will be at 5:00 PM on the 17th. That ends our public service announcement. And we will be adjourned until the 15th of December, which is next Monday night.